I agree with you. In fact, we are in the beginning. Turkey has 11 GW wind capacity, but in the offshore platforms, we have a great potential. And our biggest fortune is to take joint actions with the industry. So if we can take the right steps, we can not only... We can provide services not only for the internal market, domestic market, but also for Europe. We have the potential. And so I would like to give the floor to one of the members of the supply chain, John Bay. The floor is yours.
Right now, we have nearly 1,200 turbines and we have 90 service points. One of the biggest reasons behind the success of our... The Nortex in Turkey is the incentives for the production. You know, we are one of the first companies to provide the customers with these incentives because we were first noticed. And we have tower, plate, and connection equipment. We can deliver them. And when it comes to blade and tower, Izmir is very important for Nortex. Right now, we have three types of blades and we can procure them from Izmir for the rest of the world, not only for Turkey. And TPI, which is another type of blade. And Nortex is working in Izmir to the extent of 40%. It is important, it is valuable because there are other locations... I mean, there are other suppliers that we work with. But, you know, you can do anything when you push things. And, you know, you can have 80% domestic production, domestic reliance. But in order to make it sustainable, suppliers need to be able to export. That is the main point. And with Alper and with other panelists, we agree on one thing. We have something in common with Ersan as well, to some extent. Since we are suppliers, we have international companies that we urge, you know, why don't we make investments in Portugal or Morocco, for instance? So in order to do that, in order to change our current infrastructure and ecosystem, in addition to towers and blades, we need to produce engines, generators as well. So we need some forcibility. And we also need incentives that were given for blades and towers as well. Right now, honestly, before the pandemic, the supply chains of the global companies were shifted to Europe and from Europe to India. And these global companies turned their head to this location. But after the pandemic, logistic cost has increased in an unpredictable way. And because of the setback in China, you know, it created an opportunity for Turkey. So it is now in our hands to make use of this opportunity. So it could be new practices, new incentives that can be introduced. I'm not talking about tons of incentives, but there can be practices, you know, extraordinary practices, you know, beyond the applicable legislation. For example, in order to receive an incentive, which is quite important, you know, you need to have a certificate to show that all the equipment is from Turkey, is made in Turkey. But you can produce 10 products. You can make 10 products, but you need to make them sustainable. You know, you need to have some flexibility for these strict requirements. Let me give you an example. We were talking about this between us before the meeting. We have other companies here. They make the boxes for our plates and they send them to Germany. For example, an authority can say that if the... If it is plated in Turkey or if it is manufactured in Turkey, then you can get this much points, this many points. So it's... May not be that sensible to reduce things to this because we need to be more flexible in terms of incentives, to be able to use incentives. Another important topic is the supply, of course. We have been talking about this. I am sure other panelists know better about this than I do. I am not talking about only tangible materials. Services and know-how are important as well. And Izmir is a hub for those services. You know, it is... It gives me pride to say this. Siemens has an R&amp;D center here. And there is an academy built by Nortex here. Right now, all of our suppliers, of our suppliers, foreign suppliers, can be provided with technical training here. We can provide jobs and we can also buy materials. So it's not just for the services. In our Izmir office and in our Istanbul office, we can export engineering. And our blue collar employees work in the United States, in Chile, in the Nordic countries. They use the know-how that they have acquired in Turkey and they work in those countries. And the next step, we need to think about how to improve it. What we can do next? Let me get back to the topic, the supply chain. The roads are very important. Izmir has a very important geopolitical location, but we have a long way to go, as Ersan will tell you about this. This is one of our challenges. As the market for blades grows and the market for towers grows, we need to match the investments accordingly. With Izmir being the hub, it is all over Egypt and 10,000 jobs have been created and the export level has hit $1 billion. So it has become a very important industrial sector. And in the years to come, in the medium and long term, there will be offshore wind equipment production as well. And we are going to lay out the logistic infrastructure. And we are going to... We have seen some efforts to be put in place about the port infrastructure. And the minister has also attended a conference in Hamburg. And he has made statements in Hamburg and yesterday as well in terms of the developments in the sector. And we believe that the amount of waste to be disposed is huge. So as an agency, since our inception and especially for the past 10 years, with Izmir being the hub, we have a competitive edge in terms of wind energy and clean energy. So in this respect, we would like... We are aiming to improve our production capability and we would like to improve the supply chain, especially for clusters. We are taking actions accordingly. And now I will give the floor to Alper Bay because Alper Bay, he has been involved in this. His story started in Izmir and he is one of the architects of this ecosystem. He has been witness to this since its inception. And with HCA, we are conducting a project with a EU project. It is the final year of the project. And as a part of this project, we are aiming to improve the supply chain competition. And we would like to make sure that the companies can make progress in the value chain as well. And we also would like to make sure that new companies join this sector. And I would like to take this occasion to share this. As a part of this project, you know, we have been conducting a significant set of studies. And the results of these studies will be released on November 8th as a part of the Clean Energy Conference. On this occasion, I would like to invite you to attend that conference, attend that event because it will be an important event where we will see major results about what awaits the industry in the future. So I am sure that our colleagues will tell you about the details. It is a topic that we attach great importance to. So before further ado, I would like to give the floor to our panelists. They have 10 minutes for their speech to talk about their perspective on supply chain and their overall assessment for the future. So I would like to give the floor to the head of the sectoral cluster, Alper Bay, to begin with. The floor is yours, Alper Bay. It's time, but we had a pandemic, you know. And it is great to organize this event in Izmir. We had an event last year about maritime sports. And last week, we had a major geothermal congress held in Izmir. And we had a conference about solar energy. So we can safely say that Izmir is the capital of clean energy. And, you know, on Monday, the Ministry of Industry posted something on social media about clean energy. I've been in the top five associations for clean energy. So Izmir is 400 MW ahead of the next city in Turkey. And Izmir ranks fifth in terms of solar and geothermal energy. And we rank third in biomass. Izmir is the only city that ranks at top five in three categories. That is why we are delighted to have this organization in Izmir and we hope that the following events will be also healthy in Izmir. I would like to give you an overall introduction to tell you about why this sector has originated in Izmir. And Ash actually talked about this yesterday. Our biggest fortune is the diversification of wind energy. Since 1998, three wind turbines served as a point of origin for the rest of Turkey. And then in 2000, with the power plant built in Bosceada, and I was one of the founding members of that power plant. So we analyzed the wind environment on the island because it is far from the main grid, from the mainland. And then a decision was made to make investments across Turkey. And then with Demirler Holding, a decision was made to build this plant in June 2000. So we need to take a look at what was going on in June 2000 in Turkey. We had 10 MW installed capacity. And we... It was five years before the introduction of the law on renewable energy. And it was two years before the establishment of HPDK. Oh, I mean, the Energy Market Regulatory Authority. So back in the day, there was nobody or no organization that you could talk to if you were interested in wind energy or wind power plants. So there was no regulation back in the day. And it was a great estimation or great projection to make this investment in Izmir. And this is what has triggered to bring this investment to Izmir. And when we started this in late 2000, I remember this very vividly, when we were going to build the first blade. You know, we had to import everything that we will use for production from other countries, from Germany. Everything was sent to Turkey. And back in the day, we didn't even know what equipment we could find from Turkey, from our domestic sources. So there is no database about what is available or not, what parts can be found in Turkey or not. Nobody knows. So all the equipment and materials were delivered to our plant. And we started in mid-2002. And the Energy Market Regulatory Authority was newly established. And it was called Electricity Market Regulatory Board. It wasn't called the Energy Market Regulatory Authority. And then the ministry realized that the energy is not only about electricity. So it was then renamed as Energy Market Regulatory Authority. And we saw an opportunity to approve some submaterials for settlement. And then we... We started with compost material. And Turkey had infrastructure for that, but we didn't have other materials. So we started with a certain group of materials and we gradually installed the materials. So we laid out a significant infrastructure for blade composts in Izmir. And it took a few years to do that. For a main IAM to be readily available in Turkey was quite an advantage because those organizations that wanted to make investments in Turkey, when they look at the Turkish map, you know, they can say, oh, there are operations in Izmir. So automatically, they turn their head to Izmir. And, you know, whoever comes to Izmir usually stay. So the first start was important. Why did we have this cluster in Izmir? You know, the very first wind turbine plant. If it was built in Mersin, then Mersin would be the capital of the wind energy. If it was Mandurma, then Mandurma would be the capital of wind energy. So that is the reason why. And when people come to Turkey for investments, they thought that, you know, Izmir was the right place to make investments. And second of all, they saw the ecosystem. And back in the day, in 2010, for instance, we had the law, we had the legislation, we had regulation. And we had some requirements about domestic production, reliance on domestic production. And the investors who would like to make investments knew what to do and where to apply. And with the regulation, you know, the investors began to flow. So it coincides with 2011. So when they look at the map, they come to Izmir. And back in the day, in the coastal areas, there were many suitable locations. And they made investments in Turkey. And the second and the third companies didn't waste time to make investments. You know, they have... We had compost in Turkey. We had foreign investors in Turkey. So there were more to come. And there were also some organizations who were based in Izmir or around it who were involved in the wind energy sector. They have become popular, some of them have become popular. And when they want a value, an added value in the wind energy sector, they can also evolve and grow into other business branches. They had this opportunity. So the foreign companies guided them and supported them. And it was 2020, so two months later, it will be the 25th anniversary of the first wind power plant and wind turbine in Cheşme. And it has been 20 years since we built... Since we made our first blade. And we have created 10,000 jobs and we are talking about a huge number of exports. But we are in the beginning of the road, actually. I'm checking the time in the meantime to make efficient use of time. For instance, we have reached 1,1,300 MW. And so we could have had 20,000 MW, you know. We obtained only 20% of our energy from solar and wind energy. If it was 30%, we didn't have to talk about the rising prices of utility bills. If it was 40%, then we would feel it. We would notice it in our utility bills. Now, we are talking about clean energy sector, which is now... Which doesn't have to be subsidized now. And it is now in a position that generates electricity. Mehmet Bay has mentioned about offshore platforms. And the World Bank, as you know, reports that we have 75,000 MW capacity in Turkish seas. And in Turkey, the electricity consumption is very intense in the Marmara region. And we have Marmara Sea, which is an inland sea. I mean, we have different locations, wind potential as well. And like in Izmir, there are cities such as Istanbul where the wind capacity is high. You know. And one of the biggest fortunate aspects of wind energy in Turkey is that they are located in places where the electricity consumption is high. So I mean, the western part of Turkey or the trace region of Turkey. Because in Turkey, we had, you know, we had to transport energy from other parts of Turkey to the locations where the energy consumption was high. Now, clean energy also break this chain. You know, when it comes to offshore platforms for the next 10 years, the goal is to have 10% of the energy from those platforms. You know, the industrial infrastructure of Turkey and human resources are suitable to do that. And as you know, we have been talking about the Çanlars Port. And I believe that we have raised awareness already about it. For years, it was something that we were talking to one another, but it is now debated by the ministers. So we have some awareness about that. Right now, the European countries are now taking momentum, you know, accelerating their momentum. And Turkey needs to close the gap. And in order to do that, there is no barrier in front of us, especially in Izmir. So maybe other panelists will talk about this. Maybe in terms of logistics shipments, we have some challenges. You know, I'm sure Ersan Bay will talk about this. There are some challenges in terms of logistics, but I think that they can be eliminated. And once we do that, I think there will be nothing to stop Izmir. And in terms of clusters, when we have the first light, first green light, then everyone has begun to gather. So Izmir is going to be a major production center, not only for Turkey, but also for the rest of the world. Engineering is very important. Nortex Academy and the service and maintenance services are very important for the Aegean region. It creates an added value. And there is also an RD center by Siemens here. It is one of the two RD centers by Siemens. So we need to... We would like to raise awareness about them because a great deal of work is being done in Izmir in terms of engineering and exporting them. And you made a great point about incentives. As the agency, we are taking significant steps with GRAP. We had an industrial tour and it was attended by the bureaucrats of the ministry and the minister himself and the members of the parliament. It raised awareness among them. So when it comes to towers and other equipment, they should be part of the incentives. But when it comes to offshore platforms and the new awareness about them, we think that we will have a more comprehensive set of incentives for renewable energy and clean energy equipment. We believe that will happen because this sector, as you have mentioned, has a long way to go. And with right incentives, with right subsidies, we can create a significant added value. Thank you very much for your inputs. And I would like to give the floor to Ersan Bay from CSP. And he is one of the manufacturers, tower manufacturers as well. Even though I don't have much experience in this sector, in February, it will be 13 years since I started this profession. That is why, in terms of the improvement of the local domestic supply chain, I have made some humble contributions, whether it's a local project or not, whether there is a requirement for domesticity, the component to make up the tower should be manufactured in Turkey, if not in Izmir, but in other parts of Turkey. And we have been taking actions to make sure that is the case. You know, we have received great contributions from others in terms of uninterrupted production for the supply of equipment from Izmir and if not from the neighboring towns. We are still doing this. Skander Bay still mentions about this. You know, Alikan is here, Alikan Bayramol is here as well. And we talked to him this morning about investments in Izmir. CSP is the world's largest tower manufacturer. And in Alia Organized Industries Zone, we have two plants where we operate. And in June 2018, the CSP penetrated into Turkish markets and we produced two or three towers back in the day. And now we can manufacture 40 and in a couple of months, it will be 50 towers that we can manufacture. So they are onshore towers. And we also have a settlement plant for our third plant, which will be focused on offshore. So it will be built in Izmir and we are in contact with the highest level of the authorities, highest level authorities. And last month in Hamburg, you know, we had a fair and 60% of the participants were offshore companies and in line with the demands of our clients for towers. We improved, we have increased the capacity of our plant in Portugal. And we are still making efforts to bring this investment to Turkey, to Izmir. Let me give you some example. We used to have 83 employees when we penetrated into Turkish market. Now we have more than 610 employees. If we open our third plant, it will be over 1,000 employees. As a part of our contribution to the employment in Izmir. And our weekly capacity to build towers uh is fifty. And if we can make the major investment that we plan, we will be able to manufacture two hundred and seventy towers as of twenty twenty seven. But this depends on the circumstances and the course that this sector will take. This is not only specific to Turkey, but also to other countries where we operate. And we hope that we can make major investments in Turkey. And in a previous presentation, I mentioned about this. We have a client who is ready to make a contract of worth uh worth two two four point two uh billion US dollars in five years. So that is the case right now. And as C S B two days ago from T P I, Gökan has mentioned and Mahmut has mentioned, you know, we have a challenge in terms of roads. One of our clients has some problem in terms of access of towers to the port, which was something very unexpected. And I would like to thank the Izmir Development Agency. Uh so because of this road problem, that clients and we would like to have this problem eliminated as soon as possible. So that the export would be from Turkey, and they put pressure on Maya and on us as well. So unless there is, there are some unexpected problems, then we will uh open the third and the fourth plant in Izmir. So we have this intention, because when it comes to the offshore plant, we have been offered lands uh in other locations, but we would like to have it in Izmir because of the qualified workforce and because of the suppliers who are located here. So we would like to make the investment here. And in addition, there are some Asian suppliers who wait for us to make this investment. And with that investment, they will make investment, they will, they are asking already about some lands to be dedicated in Turkey and in Izmir. And we hope that the export from Izmir, especially in wind energy and in towers, will be higher than ever. Uh that is our hope. In addition, at the local level, the approach of our suppliers is as follows, because some of them are here joining us. Because I talked to them about this, in two thousand twenty and twenty one, we had to buy four thousand tons of sheet plates. And when I talked to them, they they used to tell me that, you know, they uh sell that amount of sheet metal in Monday, and when they would hang up the phone. So they have made a great progress in terms of their uh production capability and in terms of technicality. They have made a great progress, and they know that with more investments, uh they can manufacture more. And especially if they would like to engage in offshore platforms, they need to make major investments. Uh as Jeff Bezos did when he founded Amazon, uh he, you know, uh he asked the question, what is internet? Uh at that inception stage, you know. And we have made great effort to promote and introduce this sector. And fortunately, in terms of vision, some companies, visionary companies have taken steps and the and the side industry is improving somehow. But first of all, we need to have financial power. And the focus shouldn't be on the number of equipment to be manufactured, but also to export those products, not only in Turkey, but in other countries, for instance. I am working on the domestic production of elevators. I hope it will rely on domestic uh sources. But when we talk to local manufacturers, they their first question is, how many? So rather than realizing the potential for the future, we need to tell them about this. But during my tenure, during my thirteen year tenure, who I have seen the progress made throughout the years. So I can say that there has been a positive change and improvement. So this motivates us in terms of our desire to make more investments. As C S B, we also compete. We have competition among our group companies, and if there is no setback, you know, we are going to rank second or third in the worst case scenario in terms of turnover among the group companies. But we hope that with the advent of this third plant, with these major investments. And I I believe that we are the world's largest, and I I hope that Izmir will be the world's largest tower supplier location. So I would like to thank each and everyone, the Presidential Office of Investments, uh that has been making great contributions, and other ministries, they are taking actions. I don't want to take too much of your time. So I think the future is promising. We don't have any concern about the future as a sector. But what we need to do is to simplify the red tapes in Turkey. Even though we have made progress in that regard, the procedures should be accelerated, should be expedited. Because of the war between Ukraine and Russia, there is a great demand from Europe. So in order to keep up with that demand from Europe, in order to provide enough capacity for them, we need to continue to make investments. But at some point, we face some red tapes, some bureaucratic procedures. But in order not to say no to our clients, if we cannot supply it from Turkey, we have to supply it from other facilities around the world. But to the extent possible, we would like the export to be made from Turkey, to create jobs in Turkey and to contribute to Turkey. And if possible, to increase the number of clusters in Izmir. Thank you. A great awareness has been raised about the wind energy and the importance of it as well. But you are right in terms of logistics, because logistics is one of the main problems for not only for your company, but also for other companies across Izmir. A great awareness has been raised about the wind energy and the importance of it as well. But you are right in terms of logistics, because logistics is one of the main problems for not only for your company, but also for other companies across Izmir. Maybe Alper Bej can say that we need to do this, and with Turep, we have gathered some major figures. And to tell about the potential that we have, this has been a great contribution. And to hold this congress here, it it was important in terms of uh showing the progress made in this industry. Maybe the municipalities should also be involved in this, you know, uh to build wind power plants to it would be important for them to see them on site, you know. It should be something taken into account, you know. Uh this is just an example, you know, unless measures are taken, a third plant may not be able to be built. And if that is the case, then you would lose one hundred million US dollars and the supply chain that would come with it. And then you would also lose some companies, or you would lose the know-how and the jobs to be created, maybe in years to come, without losing much time. Maybe the metropolitan municipality of Izmir and the highways directorate and the directorate of forestry can be involved uh in this process to be, to introduce this uh uh matter to them. And we should uh definitely do that. Now I would like to give the floor to another major player in this industry, Chalar Bay. With compressors, we have nearly twenty thousand tons of fitness ferro molding capacity. And eighty five percent of it is exported to different parts of Europe. In fact, for the past fifteen years, we have been collaborating with many clients about wind turbine from Europe, Z F, I C O P. We are collaborating with them for the past fifteen years as a part for the supply of molding pieces of the wind turbines. And during the pandemic, we have, we provided uninterrupted services uh thanks to our qualified workforce and the high quality of our products. And we are involved in the critical supply chains as well. And from our perspective, from the perspective of our country and from the perspective of Izmir, it is quite important. And we are not only focused on wind turbines, we are also focused on machine sector and the valve sector and the automotive industry as well. Uh we manufacture pieces for them, for example. For the past two days, we are talking about stocks, you know, the domestic vehicles. And we are also manufacturing molds for them. And for wind turbines, our company has been helping out many companies about molding and modeling and the manufacturing of molds and how to process them. So we are different from many molding companies. We are, we have expertise in terms of wind turbines. Because we have a longstanding experience uh uh in terms of collaborating with companies from Europe. And of course, there is a difference in terms of experience. So why don't we make use of it in our own country? You know, we talk about domestic uh reliance on domestic sources. Uh I am sure that our company will be an important actor. We can manufacture these products here, I can safely say that. And in terms of offshore platforms, we collaborate with Z F for Vesta two three six uh for molding. Uh so since we are focused on Europe, we are a little bit ahead of the curve. So this is important for us, and I would like to thank you for this. Because since two thousand five, we have been manufacturing these pieces. And we have been growing as a company with continuous investments. And in this respect, ISCOM has been very useful for us. So I would like to thank the organization, I mean, the ISCA as well. And from Kalion Group, Mortaza mentioned something very important yesterday. I would like to highlight his statement. You know, the domestic requirement was sixty five for in Y K one. And in in Y K two, it has been reduced to fifty five percent. And and the fact that these pieces are imported from European countries while they can be manufactured in Turkey, this actually makes us sad, frustrated, but we continue to make investments. There are some pieces that we cannot manufacture, I mean, by not being able to manufacture. You know, in terms of capability and machine and equipment, we cannot manufacture them. So these are the heaviest pieces of turbines. They are the largest pieces of turbines that we cannot manufacture here. Uh we also the location, uh allocation and the environmental impact assessment reports, they are all ready. So this is a long process, you know, the investment process should be managed well. Uh it should be made on time, uh so that you can maximize the efficiency. So to be honest, we are ready. As Elson, with the support of the Ministry of Energy and Natural Resources, uh is going to share uh its experience with us, and we will do the same. And we will be part of the process. So we are ready to do our part. To be frank, as unlike the group of companies that manufacture uh blades, uh manufacturing that large pieces of turbines is a particular source of pride for us, because each department has its own challenges. And they have different processes. But for us, molding is an important process for us, it's an individual process, it's a challenging process for us. To be honest, in terms of employment, in terms of capability, it is challenging. So that is why being here, having presence in Izmir is advantageous, you know, and we will continue to make use of that advantage to make investments. And we are an emerging sector, and we can see that there is a lot of progress to be made. Especially for the past two days, we can uh see that the added value is huge uh from this sector to the economy of our country and to the exports of our country. And we are manufacturing a product with such a great contribution to the economy. And it takes, it gives us pride. Thank you very much. The ecosystem to be introduced by Sandali will bring about different perspectives. Molding is uh something entirely different. I visited the plants once again. Uh uh and there is an aspect, you know, an artisan aspect of what you do. You know, you mold, and if it, you know, you mold very large pieces, and if it doesn't meet the criteria, then that large piece will be useless. So in this regard, it is good to see that you make new investments. It is very pleasing for us. Uh to be honest, I will give the floor to Iskander to chair this session, because we are lagging behind the time. We are lagging behind the schedule. I have a speech that I will need to attend in another hall. But for an overall assessment, next week, we are going to hold an event where we can go into details, we can share the results of a comprehensive study. And maybe as an introduction, I can say this. Of course, there is a long way to go, especially in terms of added value. There is a lot of progress to be made. And as Arson said, in terms of launch and in terms of elevators, uh we need to work on uh domestic production of them in the Aegean region or in Iz- and in Izmir. So and as an agency, we would like to be uh able to add up some supplier improvement programs with the support of uh some of the suppliers, of course, with our clusters. There are uh new companies, there might be new companies with potential and with, you know, who are willing to make investments, and with the support of the ministry, it will be possible. And of course, the initiative of Assel San is something that we attach importance to. As an agency, we are happy to see Assel San to be involved in Izmir as well. Now in terms of uh managing the wind energy industry from Izmir. Fatih Karajada, the deputy minister, has been a member of the boards at Assel San. So he has been taking efforts, making efforts for lobbying. And so if we can be part of the ecosystem along with our other actors, it would be great for us. along with our other actors, it would be great for us. I mean, Alesan leads the process, as mentioned by the minister. But with our own brand, with our domestic brand, we would like to manufacture domestic turbines. But we need to do that together with the, with different actors. And everyone can offer their contributions. And Alesan is like an umbrella organization and it can share its know-how. And the minister has made an open call for this. And I hope that in that regard, the agency will continue to collaborate with the rest of the industry. And I would like to take this occasion to thank you for your participation. I am sorry for leaving and I will give the floor now to Iskan Darbay to chair the rest of the session. I know that you have to leave and thank you for your contributions. We always know that you are standing behind us. I know that you have to leave and thank you for your contributions. We always know that you are standing behind us. I know that you have to leave and thank you for your contributions. It is unfortunate to be the final speaker of any session. And now I will have to chair, handed over by Mehmet. I hope that I will succeed. My name is Iskan Dar-Türkiy. I am the managing partner of Ikskan. I am also a board member of the Turkish Wind Energy Association. So I am also one of the officials, a board member of the organization. I would like to thank you for your contribution. I have two capacities here, so I will talk to you about our perspective on the industry and on Izmir. So I can start with the company and then I will talk to you about the perspective of the Turkish Wind Energy Association and how we look at the industry. As other panelists, we are not equipment manufacturers. We are a site industry engineering company. And our focus is on aluminium and steel processing. We provide plants with uh services, you know, they manufacture blades and turbines. And they are located in Turkey and in other countries. Uh the aluminium and iron that we process are delivered to those companies from Turkey. And as of last year, eighty percent of our, what we manufacture was exported. And this year it will be quite similar. And uh we are ranked as a as an SME, as classified by the Ministry of Trade. Uh I'm, why I am talking about this? Yes, the, there are many jobs created by the large manufacturers. But on the other hand, the ninety-nine percent of the companies in Turkey are SMEs. And most of the employees are created by SMEs in Turkey. And from a different perspective, we can say that uh to make sure that the profit generated stays in Turkey. So the SMEs play a crucial role in this regard. So I can happily say that companies like us create employment and know-how. And it is thanks to, it depends on the ecosystem created in Izmir and the attraction of companies and the plants to this city. So the story is very simple. Ira was the first one to make the first investment in Turkey. It is, it has been followed by other manufacturers. Now we have three international companies with four plants and they manufacture wind blades, wind turbine blades. And almost all of them, eighty percent of them are exported. And in order for these plants to manufacture products, they need a local ecosystem, a domestic ecosystem. Therefore, with the improvement of site industries, we can attract new investments. We can have strengths in this respect. We have the potential to attract more investments. We believe that we have a long-established ecosystem. So in order to attract new equipment manufacturers and to create more jobs here and also to improve the site industry, this will be an important stage. Who are our competitors? India, China and Poland are competitors. So our site industrialists should support us, which will be important for us. And it will be a contribution to the economy of the country, because that's where we have felt their support. As a first step, you know, site industrialist usually starts with a plant, with a factory. And the quality expectation is very high. And it takes a few years of supervision and only after then you can become part of the supply chain. Then you can have trials, you can have tests. And you need to manage to offer products for other companies. And then you can export products to other countries. Because those companies may have plants in Europe and it would be an opportunity for you to export products to those facilities as well. And we provide products for the plants based in Bergama, for instance. And we also provide, we also export products to the plants based in Brazil. So the more equipment manufacturers are based here, then the more added value we can create for our country. And if we can manage to spread this, to turn this into a grassroots mobilization, then it would be something meaningful for the country. And the statistics say so as well. As of two thousand twenty, the number of industrial jobs for wind energy industry was two thousand. Now it is more than twenty-five thousand. And when you look at the export and the manufacturing figures, the Turkish wind energy industry has a turnover of over one point five billion dollars and eighty percent of it is exported. So all of our main equipment manufacturers and site industrialists have an army of manufacturing. And it has become a long-established industry. And I will give the floor to other panelists for a question. But let me say this, the future that awaits us is promising. I believe that and Turkey is on the cusp of a great opportunity. So we are a few steps closer to the utilization of this opportunity than other cities. And as you know, in the European Union, they had a policy without China. They had a manufacturing policy without China. And this has helped the Turkish industrialists take one step further ahead of China. So the disruption in the supply chain and the ongoing war in Russia uh have actually caused a growth in the demand for energy, in renewable energy. Even if we have the money in our pocket, for instance, if we go to the Anarcon and if we say that we are ready to buy a turbine, they cannot provide us with a turbine within a year. It would take a year. So it takes even fourteen months. So this is not a problem, this is an opportunity for us to accelerate the supply. The neighboring countries like Turkey should be strong. And if we can manufacture products in a quick way, in a rapid way, and if we can become part of their supply chain, we can help the European Union accelerate the balancing the supply chain demands. Because the disruption with Far East can be compensated with the manufacturing capability of Turkey. I think this would be a great opportunity, given the financial circumstances in Turkey right now. And Izmir is a great location for that. Because first of all, it has a longstanding ecosystem. From Al Sanjak, you know, in one hour, you can go to anywhere, you can go to any plant. You know, Alper base plant is thirty minutes away from here or we can go one hour away from here. We can go to Atash, which manufactures generators. Or we, you can buy towers from that company. So any industrialist who comes to Izmir can have access to anything within one hour distance. This is the city of Izmir. Even in Europe, we also have a colleague from Europe. Even in Europe, in a small city like Izmir, you cannot see many cities where you would have three manufacturers with four plants where they manufacture generators. There is none. So we need to make use of this opportunity. Mehmet has summarized it quite well, the other panelists said so. We have an agenda. Now the sector has been shifting its focus on the offshore. I know that the offshore investments are a different case, you know, whether, I don't know if it would be made use of by the country or not. But we cannot miss the manufacturing trends. We do not have, we cannot afford missing this opportunity because the added value that will be brought to the economy of the country is great. There is no barrier in front of us to bring that investment here. And those large blades and towers can be brought to the ports. There is no barrier to that either. And we see this in bilateral talks, CSP team here, Alesan can say the same. And if we can build an offshore port, everyone is ready to make investments here. So as a country, Turkey cannot afford missing this opportunity. We should be on the same page. Two days ago, the Minister of Industry held a meeting with specific focus on this topic. There are different formulas that we can develop. But a couple of years ago, it was difficult to raise the awareness of the Ministry of Industry. But now the minister himself, with the presentation of Chandali, we can talk about how we can put it into practice and we have made a progress and we need to finalize this. This is our perspective on the industry. Our board was elected on February two thousand twenty-two. So it has been only eight months. We held four major events within eight months. He made a strategic decision before we made plans, we made plans for these events. We tried to identify what was the biggest challenge and what was the biggest opportunity for the wind energy sector. Supply of new projects is the biggest challenge for the domestic market. This has always been a problem. We need new projects to create new jobs for the companies, for the manufacturers. But globally, there is such a great need for the manufacturing of equipment that we have, we declared two thousand twenty-two as the year of industry. We have organized all of our events accordingly. After one month, one month after we came into office, we went to Bilbao with a high-level delegation, we attended this event. It was an event held by Windrock. And we visited our shareholders there, our stakeholders there, to tell them about our vision. We returned from Bilbao in April. And then in June, we held the very first technical tour in Izmir, which is the first of its kind in the history of our industry. For two days, we were joined by the Deputy Minister of Energy, the head of the parliament for the Energy Committee and seven members of the parliament and high-level officials of the public authorities to visit six plants across the setting. The fact that the people from Ankara administration saw the manufacturing in person and the jobs that are created makes things very different. We were joined by only experts when we were visiting Bilbao, experts from the Ministry of Industry. But now Turep is attended by the minister himself. And we were not content with this technical tour that we held in June. Then we visited the fair in Hamburg, which is the largest of its kind for the industry. We went there with the delegation. Along with fifteen industrial companies, we visited pavilions in Hamburg as well as the Ministers of Energy and the Minister of Industry. It was one of the rare occasions where two ministers were attending a conference in another country. We were delighted to host this event as Turep because Hamburg is a place where the Turkish industry can export products to. It is a place where we can show our strength. And now we are organizing this event for Turep, one month after our visit to Hamburg. Why do we organize Turep in Izmir? Yes, I am originally from Izmir, but and I think that it is the most beautiful city in Turkey. It is also the most enjoyable city in Turkey. But the reason why we are here today is the fact that the industry is, it's the fact that Izmir is the hub of the industry. So as the Turkish Wind Energy Association, we will continue to focus on two thousand twenty-two as a year of industry. With the support of all our board members and our meetings that are held every two months with the ministers, we will continue to tell them about the investments that should be made here. And thus, we will make sure that the wind energy sector can contribute to the economy, employment and export of our country. And we are joined by all of our stakeholders in this efforts. Because we can do all of these things thanks to your support. It is such a great pleasure for us to do these things. We held a meeting where the CEOs of the main equipment manufacturers met the ministers in Hamburg. And we asked them this question. What do you need to build your plants in Turkey rather than in Poland or in Greece? We told them we are ready to do this as the sub-industrialists and the public authorities and the private sector as well. And I am sure that we will continue to reap the fruits of these efforts soon. Uh we are lagging behind the schedule, so if I continue to chair, I can talk until the morning. So I need to stop here. I will not conclude the session without getting a question. I have this question for our panelists. We create twenty-five thousand jobs today. We have a turnover worth one point five billion euros. In two thousand twenty-five, I mean in three years, what do you think this, the number of jobs created and the export figures will be like? If we gather here in two thousand twenty-five again, then we can reward the winner, the one with the best estimation. Maybe Alper Bay can decide what we can give out as a reward. We would like to start estimating. So it's twenty-five thousand jobs right now. What could it be in two thousand twenty-five? Uh maybe I can give the floor to Alper Bay because he knows ins and outs of this business. Yes, in three years, approximately thirty-two thousand, maybe. You previously had good estimations about the install capacity, that's I know. So thirty-two thousand three hundred, you say. How about the export figure? Two point fifteen billion euros. Let's put it in the records. I say it will be two point fifteen billion euros. Yeah, we are recording this session. If not, I will kindly ask John Su to take notes of Alper's estimation. I'm making calculations right now. Oh, Nortex is making calculations. So can I get the return on my investment in this regard? Or you will increase the, increase your export and the jobs that you create in line with this improvement? Can you promise? Can you give us a promise in this respect? No, I cannot promise. You already know that some of our recent investments have been made by others, not by ourselves. Anarco has replaced its CEO this year. I don't know if the new CEO will take this path or will take this action. So I don't know, that is why I don't have an exact answer. But I am serious about the figures that I have just given. John Su has taken notes of your estimation. I can turn to Alesan.
I can turn to Arson because his company has a great appetite for investments. To be honest, if Alper is good at estimations, then I don't want to add anything else. But let me give you an example from our company. If we manage to go according to the plan with the establishment of our third plant, we will have created one thousand to one thousand five hundred new jobs. And by twenty twenty-seven, our export figure will be one point five billion dollars. I mean, this is our goal. That's very good. Let me ask you the second question. CSP gained recognition after the Aegean Tower. What was the number of jobs back then and what is the number of jobs right now? It was eighty-three. It is now more than six hundred. How long did it take to do this? In four and a half years, from eighty employees to over six hundred employees in four and a half years. Our turnover was four point five million US dollars and and one point thirty-four million US dollars was made thanks to the exports. And now this year, we have a turnover worth one hundred and fifty-seven million US dollars. And almost all of it comes from exports. The next year, there will be an exponential growth. So if we can make this major plan into practice, then we will be able to have the export figure reaching one point fifty-seven billion US dollars. From your perspective, so you have twenty-five thousand jobs, how many is it going to be? I hope that this investment will stay in Turkey. Culturally, we do not, we cannot afford waiting. And we will definitely make this investment in a country, but we would like to make sure that it stays in Turkey. I can say thirty thousand or thirty-four thousand jobs. I assume that we will make this major investment. So when it comes to the export, and I can say it can be three billion US dollars. Okay, John Su has taken notes. Now, let's now give the floor here if, to see if there is any new investment plans or employment plans. I should say numbers closer to what Alper said. Maybe I should have given the floor to Alper the last. Let me say twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. And the export figure can hit three billion and one hundred million euros or dollars. I mean, it's not different today in terms of exchange rate, but I don't know if it will be different in the future. Thank you. I am actually at an advantageous position, you know, I can have Arson make the calculations. Export figure can hit two point six billion US dollars. What did Alper say exactly? The number of jobs can be thirty-two thousand. And let me tell you my estimation, I have to, and in my capacity. You know, I have explained this before. In my capacity as an official of Turep, I need to be more optimistic. And I believe in saying this. If the Chandarli port can be put into practice, then it would be fifty thousand, at least. You know, in terms of the number of jobs to be created. And I am willing to pay for it if it becomes fever. If the offshore port is not put into effect, is not activated, I think the number would be forty-five thousand. And I believe the export figure will not be less than five billion euros. Because we do not make full use of our capacity yet. We have the wind behind us and we have the appetite to make use of it. And Arson said that if they make their third investment here, they can change the rules of the game in favor of Turkey. GPI is not here, but they say the same thing. That's why it can be forty-five thousand new jobs and five billion euros in exports. And I have to conclude the session here. What was the reward? It will be Alper who decides what to reward, what the reward will be. I will personally give the rewards for the one with the best estimation. I wasn't ready for this question. We can announce it later on. I know that I have made some ambitious comments. We can give twenty percent share from Xmen. I hope so. Maybe it will be a public company back then. The one with the best estimation can get a ten to twenty percent share. And maybe five percent from CSP. So they will be industrial partners. Giving out shares is easy as long as we achieve, we secure the figures that I have just given. Thank you very much. This is the end of this session. The chairman is here to give out the reward.